Yeah, I think we are. I was gonna call you and I wasn't sure you were in today, so then I called you.
I'm sitting in the. Third class. When you have a great education and they still think you need to sit in a building, it's not a college class. Yesterday was all about learning styles. I wrote a thesis on learning styles. Two of them just poking my eyes.
Okay.
Was it on Zoom? Was it on Zoom or in person? That's where you just like turn the video off and go do something else. I've got bad signal.
Oh, no, no, my internet.
Yeah.
All right, I'm ready whenever you are, so.
Okay, well, then I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the point of legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Muckler, Craylow, Smith, Teasy, Hammond.
Right, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Through the minutes?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard who are not otherwise on the agenda? Yes.
Oh. A guest was wondering if there's an agenda around.
Um, I can have one, sure. Sorry, thank you. Take just a second.
All right. There are no visitors to be heard. Do we have Dick Strasburg online?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. And I think you and Michael have an agenda item. The courthouse security project.
Sure, well, let's just give you kind of an update on it. We don't have anything to approve today. Probably a few more questions. Well, just just an overview on this, you know, anytime you do, you know, remodel projects, as you know, if the one that you're in the midst of on the courthouse, there's always, there's, there's changes, challenges, and so on. And it's also a limited pool of contractors that are ready to jump into something that's, that is, you know, with a lot of some unknowns. So, you know, we were hired to do a RFP a couple of months ago, and I thought, you know, CMAR would be the way to go. And because that's what most contractors are, you know, accustomed to. So then I, I, I looked at what we had to work with from the, from what John had put together. And, you know, it's, it's a, it defines what we need to do. But it's not construction documents. So then I got proposals from an architect and mechanically electrical engineers. And it was almost $20,000. I thought, well, this doesn't make any sense on this small project to spend that kind of money. So then I called around to contractors and I said, so how would, what would be the best delivery method for a project like this? And would you be interested in if it is, if it's CMAR or design build or a combination, or what would you propose? Everyone I talked to said, you know, design build, they would hire the architect, they would hire the engineer to the extent that it's needed. Because really what's all this needed is it's needed to get competitive bids. That's, that is what's, you know, to get something where you can get apples to apples comparison on it. So then we got into the design build thing and Michael can talk about this, but we engaged Jim Widerick to help out with this and he gave some really good guidance on it. So we get, we're ready to get this thing kind of finalized. Then I was talking with, with contractors, because same contractors that are, you know, proposing and working on other projects with us. And I got some real pushback on saying doing it this summer because it's an end to your job. The first question I have is on the grant money. Is there a deadline on the grant money?
No.
No, I don't believe there is.
Already checked into that. There's no deadline on it.
So then here's a thought for you to consider, and that would be to push this to the, I'm going to say the fall slash winter. And then have it so it starts to have the same contractor do the larger, you know, the remodel of the sheriff's department, police department, which sounds like a long ways off now. But if we were to have this project, which is probably, you know, four to six months, it's probably a month of, month or six weeks of design to get the drawings completed. Granted, they're pretty simple drawings, but it, you know, so it's got to get on someone's schedule and make that happen. Then it's, you know, the, the timing of the work, trying to, you know, got to get contractors in there. It's probably, you know, three months of work. It's got plumbing and it's got several trades, kind of coordination of it. To do, I'm going to say doing it the most cost effective way. And by, then you start getting it into, you know, next winter, well, we should be planning next winter for what happens. You know, I'd say in the fall after the jail is complete for completing whatever you're going to do with, with, you know, with the remodel. So the thought on it is I think we could get better pricing and more interest on it if we combine it with that project. Or put this way, hire a contractor who would do both. Who would do the smaller project and do the probably larger project of the remodel. Because it's hard to get people interested in a, you know, $300,000 project that's, that's messy. That, you know, there's, it's, it's doable, but I think you're going to pay more because it's, it's just a little messy project. So that's a thought. We can finish up the RP and do it right now if, if you want, but thought I'd get some input from you.
What's?
Makes sense to me.
Yep, every, everybody's nodding here. Yeah, I mean, that does make a lot of sense.
So what I, what I would propose to do is one is for our assignment on getting the RFP done, I want to get it done. I want to get it spit on my to do list, you know, to get this thing wrapped up. So I propose that we get it ready right now and have it finalized, so then it's ready to go. And then we talk to the market and, and see kind of timing on it. People are looking to fill their, their plate for next winter. And doing this as a, as a, when you compete with the summer jobs on smaller, with smaller contractors. We want to get past that, and that's probably something more like, you know, November work, November. You know, after ever gets, you know, the ground gets froze and it's, you can't do work outside as easily. Then actually do the work then, but probably hire them so you can get the design work and the plans done. You know, probably August, September, something like that. So if everyone's agreement on that, we could go with that. And I still want to get the agreement done, though. I want to get it, I want to get it off my plate, get it so it's finalized. And have it so it's all ready to go. So when you want to issue it, it's good. And this would, I think, set you up better for the future. And also we'll know, you know, I don't know where you're at with the dollars for other improvements in the, in the courthouse, but we'll know. You'll give it six months and we'll know where we're at more with the contingency on the jail. We can tell you right now it's going very well. We got the building out of the ground without any changes, you know, change orders. It's, it's gone well. Our challenge right now is, is the rain. It's been, I guess they're setting steel yesterday. But it's, it's held it up a couple of weeks, but they had that baked into the schedule that there'd be some delays. So I think we're in, you know, we're in good shape on it, but it's getting it out of the ground is one of the bigger risks of a project. And we're, we're past that, that risk right now. So that, that project's going well and you'll likely have substantial contingency. If it keeps going the way that it is, I don't want to say too much upfront, but if it keeps going as well as it's going right now, you're going to have contingency dollars left on that project. That could be applied to, you know, other, other uses.
Great. Any, any comments or feedback? Yep. Sounds good.
Oh, I think it's a great idea. I, having been a small contractor doing all outside work. I would, I would usually start in the middle fall to late fall, looking for projects that I could do during load limit time. Since I was getting around with heavy equipment all the time. You had finding a little project or two to fill in that spot, that six weeks or whatever was an important thing to me every year. So.
All right.
I'm on board.
Great.
All right. We'll proceed in that direction and I'll get the, get the RFP wrapped up. And so it's kind of ready to go whenever it, whenever the appropriate time is.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Scott, we got the elevator upgrade. Woo. Elevators don't come cheap, huh?
No, they don't. So today is it. This is the project wraps up today, the MEP project. All the trades are off site. As of this morning, so about the only thing left, left is that dumpster rolls off the lot. So today we signed papers, if you will, where we're taking possession of all the equipment and everything, so. It all falls into our lap today. So a couple of things that are still out there. That they can't tend to until we get into air conditioning mode. They got some stuff that they have to look at. For that air conditioner for the courtroom, but they will have to obviously wait till we get some relative humidity. Everybody's looking forward to that, I'm sure. So, so there's that and we have a controller, we have a electronic valve in the boiler room that. They're thinking that when the insulators insulated the pipes, they bumped the power head on it and broke it. So they're in the process. I think the powerhead's on its way here for that, so. That's really not an issue right now because we're able to switch it by hand, so. Yeah, so that's where we wrap that one. So it's looking like we're about done on schedule, so. Anyway.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Well, I guess the other thing that is yet to do on the project is we moved a substantial amount of property out of the building. To the city hall basement. Now that has to be moved back, so there's a price tag associated with that, so. Have that yet to do. I plan on just kind of rolling right into that and keep going with it so I can get it done in over with, so. But other than that. Eight months is up. I think it was eight months, I'm not sure. The other stuff I want to talk to you about was a couple of things I, I think we need to put on the radar screen. And be thinking about getting done in the very near future. First of all, I'll talk about the elevator. Not really sure on the age of the elevator. I was told it was installed in the 60s, so that being the case, you know. We plan on staying here for substantial amount of time. We probably need to look at doing some upgrades on it. I know Carrie had heard from one other courthouse that it was a favor about 600,000 bucks if you wanted a totally new elevator. To go through this thing and renovate it, you know, it's all new electrical, all new cabling, all new controls, all new hydraulics. You know, obviously it's going to be all digital. You know, you're looking at about a $150,000 price tag. To upgrade it and four weeks to get it done. So that's kind of in the nutshell, there, there, when I read through, I just reached out to Coney Elevator, who's, who's our service contractor and got a price from them. So, you know, when I'm reading through their document and I'm reading about one of the bid attachments, of course, there's incidentals. Yeah. You know, electrical, there's some electrical and some other stuff they have here for incidentals that we might be looking at also. I'm, I'm guessing electrical is going to be the big one. I think this attachment is probably for, is a general attachment for when, you know, they're doing a whole new system. Some of it probably is not going to be applied to us because we're already here, we're already. I'm assuming when it says hoistway, I'm assuming they're talking about. The cavity that the car travels in. So anyway, you know, that's kind of going to be the price tag around the $150,000 mark, so.
Does that include them relining the inside?
No, if you wanted to redo the inside of that car, it's another $8,000 to $15,000 if you want to get it done.
Because isn't that the problem? Running too curious pieces fall off.
Oh, you're talking about lining inside, inside.
The actual shaft.
The shaft, that's the term I was looking for.
We did that a few years, several years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, that doesn't include that, no.
We've already done it.
Yeah.
The shaft is certainly stable now.
Yep, they, you know, whatever they, they use concrete mixture or some kind of a, you know, something to reline so that we didn't have chunks falling.
So when all the bills are in for the MEP project, will there be any, anything left?
That I don't know.
Yeah.
The contingency on that was, was only 150. And I'll use some of that. How much? I don't know for sure. Yeah.
So we may have to wait for the dust to settle a little bit to see.
Right.
To see what's.
I'm just putting it out there so you know it's out there and it's something we should get done, so.
It's kind of, you know, beyond unavoidable. What's the schematics on courts and access to the upper floors for a month?
Yeah.
Still have to go to union.
Yeah.
Be able to hold court.
You know, if we were to say, if we were to say, okay, we're going to pull the trigger today and still be about eight months out before they got to the project. Six to eight months, so. You know, when we do, when we do decide, you know, we have time to get all that in order to say, hey, we're going to, you know, down for four weeks, so. Yeah.
In your opinion, I mean, how big of an emergency is it?
I don't think it's an emergency. This, this last episode we had with it was not. Mechanical. It was somebody's pride. And I finally called the regional manager, so this isn't flying. And we're not going to be down for this amount of time because this guy doesn't want to throw in the towel and bring in somebody else that knows what they're doing. Then things got done. So.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
When we get to other jail, get through. Treasurer's office is next door.
Yeah, yeah. And.
Pay out activity every day.
And.
Up and downs.
Right. You know, and maybe that's follow Dick Strasburg's, maybe that gets put into the project that there's an upgrade done on that elevator too.
Well, it should be done same time we remodel the courtroom.
True.
We're going to kick courts out for that. Get kicked out at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not sure how easy that'd be to coordinate, but I'm sure we could coordinate if we plan far enough out. If we say, okay, you know, we're doing. If we pick a date that we're going to do that courtroom security project, let's say it's a year out or whatever it might be, a year and a half. If we pick that date, the dead winter, and I agree with that whole thing there, that we should be able to. Have plenty of time to say, hey, you know, this is when we want to do it.
Well, he's talking the courtroom this winter.
This winter.
So I mean, if you're already talking eight month lead time, we're already here.
December. Yeah.
On the elevator.
Right. Right.
So is that the eight month lead time? Is that just for their scheduling or is that to actually order parts?
No, they'd order the parts right away. So I'm pretty sure she said between six and eight months. To get it on the schedule. You know, and, you know. On the project this size, do we have to let it out for bids? Is that, we're over our threshold there, so that kind of complicates the process too, so that pushes you. You know what I'm saying? If they're going to start that in November. It's going to kind of hard to get, might become difficult to get everything to line up. You know, I don't, I hate to see us put it off any longer, but to get it to line up, we might have to say. You know, winter 2025, unfortunately, that, you know, another, instead of 2024.
I would think that most probable scheduling for doing the courthouse work would be probably next February, March, something like that to get past the holiday season. And, but it's still solidly in winter schedule for the contractors.
Yeah, that's true.
If we went to. Prepare bid docs and bid this out sometime a month or two down the pike, would that sound reasonable that it would? Still sort of comply with that eight months out?
I think so.
Yeah, maybe the RFP could actually give a time, time slot. Might make it a little more difficult to get bids, but if we're going to coordinate it.
The, the RF, RFP for the courtroom security project, you're talking, yeah.
But if we print it out and said you can't start until the first of December on the elevator.
Yeah. Or even after that, you know, if we had bids done by July something.
I think, I think when we got the bids, we'd have to call and see how flexible they are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because this, this is, obviously this is this one contractor speaking. You know. And if somebody else comes in lower, I'm going to go with them, you know, whatever, their schedule might be more flexible too. We don't know, but. Yeah.
And I had some concerns about the site requirements, but you seem to think like 10,000 will cover anything that isn't there already. So it seemed, it seemed like it was a pretty substantial list of things that were not included in the 129 to 139 and. Electrical, some of it's making sure we have a machine room that meets their needs.
Yeah, I mean.
Fire suppression and.
The, the fire, the fires there, this, the fire alarm system's there, just can't be tied into that older system. So that's the, that requirement's meant to spring clear as a met. I mean, they've been using that machine room since the 60s, so. You know.
The breaker requirements, RK1 fuses and, that's all.
Yeah.
Counter weighting will be adequate. I, yeah, just as I read through the list, I thought, oh, I don't know. I really don't know how much all this could cost.
Yeah, you know, I. I think we're grandfathered in on some stuff. There's stuff that. Inside that shaft that. Shouldn't be there by code, but it's there. It's been there since day one because that used to be the men's restroom. And it's a, it's a waistline and a couple of water lines to get up to the second, third floor bathroom. So there's really no other place to put them and they existed there before they turned it into a shaft and.
There's still cables up there too, though, right?
There's what?
They're like internet cables or phone cable or.
There could be, yeah.
Didn't we use those for chases, Andy?
Yeah. I, I think we're going to be grandfathered in on some stuff, so yeah.
Which will be fine as long as the elevator companies know.
Right.
What they're working.
Right. And we can put that in the document too.
Yeah, the quote we got is, you know, that's a. Quote from one guy or one company, once we hold their feet to the fire a little bit with the bidding process, they may sharpen their pencil a bit more.
Yeah, right.
Usually if you're, you go to, you ask somebody to give a, a quote for a project like this. You want to make sure that that quote is high enough that there aren't surprises in the end. It very often then, but by the time it goes to bidding, then you, you sharpen your pencil a bit more and it can end up being a little lower.
Right. So you want me, you want me to work up some kind of request for proposal, then I. I don't think it'll be anything too elaborate. I mean, they're going to have to come on site and look at it, et cetera, et cetera, to put forth a bid. I'll see what I can do with it, what I can put together. And then bring it back before you guys then, the RFP.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so then the other item is, this one I've been thinking about since I got here, is. Within the courthouse or under the courthouse or within the courthouse. Vertically and horizontally, there's 110 feet of cast iron drain line, four inch cast iron drain line. But we all know what's going to happen to that eventually. It's going to kaput. It's going to scale shut. It's going to collapse. The part that concerns me the most is what's underneath the structure, just down the hall here. Everything from the building out to streets been replaced, but we do have some within the, within the structure. So trying to get proactive. I've only reached out to one company that, that lines these pipes, just to get, get a price. They're here a couple of weeks ago. They camera the lines, measured things off. You know, what they do, the process, the process is about four or five days long. It wouldn't have to shut down. We might have to isolate water usage on floors as they're proceeding along. But they come in and they jet the line and they de-scale it. They jet it out and they, they de-scale it. They have a piece of equipment that goes down there. Rattles the scale off the sides of the pipe and polishes it up, this is exact words. Then there's a process they use, and I don't know how it works, but I've seen the videos of it and stuff. I've watched a little bit of it online. But they're able to line the inside of these pipes and.
So like a spray on coating or something?
It's something they lay in there, just like, I don't know. I've seen it done. It's just kind of bizarre to watch. And how they heat it up or what they do to it, but it expands and lines inside the pipe. They, they go in there with the machine and they mark every place another line comes in. They're able to mark it off somehow. And they're able to block those lines off, then they're able to line that main line and they're able to come back with another piece of equipment and cut out all those intersecting pipes. Now, I know I've seen them do the city, the city ones. Of course, they're pretty massive. You can get down inside there, but. I, I watched the videos and. You know, I'm, I'm, once again, I'm not an expert on this at all, so. But, you know, my fear is if. If they start collapsing on us or scaling shut, you know, especially when we get down here. Around that boiler room, that's where everything kind of comes together and, you know, we're getting pretty far under the ground and jackhammering up some. Major concrete to get down there to start replacing stuff. Just to give an example of how much scaling's inside there, that within the assessor's office, that I guess would be the. It'd be that. North. Be that. At off, that office just to the east there, so I guess it'd be the northeast office. There was a four inch line that came down out from the old sheriff's office for a toilet and then crossed the ceiling and back into the wall. Well, we got it that out of there. Just to get it out of there since it was being used. It opens up the office and makes it a little better for working conditions, et cetera. And when I got inside that wall there and cut that cast iron, four inch cast iron there at 18 inches. Down to where it dropped into the four inch, and that was full of scale, so. You know, we're sitting on a time bomb, as they say. At some point in time, it's going to give us issues.
When they camered it, they felt it's still stable enough to do their process?
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, they didn't camera every square inch of it, but they ran enough of it. To, you know, even up on the roof and ran down the vents and stuff and looked inside there. And I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything glaring like places where it was collapsing or road shut or holes or anything like that at this point.
Did they give you like an estimate of how much it takes?
Thirty two thousand dollars.
I mean, to extend the life up there.
I'd have to ask them that question. I was sitting, sitting here thinking about that too. They might have told me, but if they did, I probably forgot, but yeah. I can call and ask them that. I know they told me, but I didn't write it down, so, but yeah.
It, I, I know that there are sewer lines across Vermillion, including my own. I just spent, I don't know, 3,000 bucks getting mine, you know, jetted and repaired. And it's, it's a, it's a problem that's increasingly common because the sewer lines were all put in at a certain point in time and. Boy, this sounds like something we, we really need to do.
Right, I would definitely consider it. I definitely encourage it to be done to extend the life, but I'll find out what the. What the, that life expectancy could or should be.
Yeah.
I can get that data for you.
And I guess the question again is, do we need to bid this one out?
I, I interrupt you. What'd you say the cost was?
Thirty two, 31,300.
Under fifty. Not enough to have to bid it, so.
I mean, and we, you know, I, I could bid it out, I could shop around other companies too. I just did a little research online one day and reached out to these guys up in Sioux Falls, so. But like I said, on those websites, you can make yourself look really good. So I did call them yesterday, asked a few questions, and he's touring some, Florida, that puts this product out, so.
I, I don't know what the standard cost is for lining, um, but. Or even how, I, I mean, I, how many feet is of line are we talking?
Hundred and ten feet.
Hundred and ten feet, cause.
Yeah.
I mean, I, for jetting, I, well, I didn't have a de-scale, so. But it might be worth getting a couple more quotes.
It'd probably be. Eighteen years ago. I got a quote to, to line the, the, uh, cast iron under Sezback. I don't remember how many feet that was, it wasn't a hundred and ten, but that was fifteen thousand then, so, I mean, obviously everything keeps going up, so.
I don't know if they charge by the foot or not, but that's two hundred and ninety dollars a foot.
I'm guessing it's probably by the foot, yeah. But yeah, I can ask, I reach out to their companies, have them come and look at.
Yeah, it looks like it's, it's by the foot, is two thirty, and then they've got an additional charge for the, the junctures, sound like during the process, there's another twelve hundred tag done for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I can reach out to some other companies, I can even get a, a little more. You know, if we wanted to go from a quote to a bid. I can do that, wrap a little RFP and mail it out to them, have them come in and. Do an actual bid on it if you, if you think we wanna proceed with this, or if you think you want to. Wait to twenty twenty-five to new budget, so I can put it in there and.
And.
I mean, it's lasted this long, I don't know. And we haven't really had any problems with it, but.
But when the problem comes, it's, it's a disaster.
That's true.
That's the, you know, it, 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 yeah, I mean, it, it's, I, I just got to the day where it was total backup, so.
There will be a time, yeah, eventually all cast iron.
Yeah.
If, you know, do something to replace, and I'm assuming that, I mean, to replace these lines is gonna be well, will be well more than, well, thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, I think so, but I, like I said, I'll find out what the, what their life expectancy is on that, when I get done, and I'll call, I'll. Call more than one company and feel them out and see what they say too, so.
Yeah, I mean, if cast iron's dry, it lasts a long time, so my, my hope would be they'd say indefinitely as long as the liner holds, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So these are all mainly buried pipes?
Yeah.
Not like the one that's over your head in your office, uh?
Well, they never looked at that, well, that's all plastic.
That's all plastic.
Yeah. I, I, we were able to convert all that, cause it's exposed, but you start getting, you know, back under that gel and stuff and.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I'm interested in what the process is like and what. Uh, how long they think that, uh, a fix like this would last.
Okay.
And what's the typical mode of failure? And what happens if you're lining it and say, there's a couple of things that popped to mind if it's a, like they inject a, uh. Put out a, a liner that goes the full length and they expand it against the walls and it sticks to the walls. If one of those, uh, if it, the liner itself collapses or it's a spray-on liner, if that, that perforates somehow or if it collapses.
Yeah.
You know, detaches from the wall. How, uh? How much more trouble are we in at that point than.
Right. Right.
Presently.
Well, I know this individual, he'd probably be more than glad to come and answer any of the questions too, you know?
They do have warranty, for instance.
Right, I can, I'll ask all those questions and find out.
You know, thinking, thinking ahead of likely ways they're doing this, uh. What, uh, what could we expect going forward?
Okay.
I've, uh, I, there again, I've been involved, my first job out of, out of college, we had a. Sewer line that plugged up, that was more or less our fault, because we were in a testing lab. We would, uh, make up test cubes and test cylinders of concrete. And we wash out our equipment down the drain. Over time, we concreted shut, actually an eight inch line. So, yeah, I've got a whole other story you don't wanna hear, so.
What could possibly go wrong?
Oh, man. This, this was, this was, uh, the butt of a lot of jokes, let's put it that way.
All right, well, it sounds like a, go ahead, but with more information.
I'll look into that, get more information, and work up, uh, requests for proposal on the, uh.
Yeah.
Elevator. All righty.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Drew. Your plats here. Yep.
Yeah, my plats, uh, planning commission's on last week, signed off, I think they're just planning them off for mortgages.
Planning them off for?
Uh, mortgages, lighting off, because it's, you can't get a mortgage on a foreign place, just on sectional or on old vehicles.
Yeah, cause I noticed that the, the section describing use is not there.
No.
So I, I was trying to figure out what, where they were going with this.
Move to approve the plat.
So this is resolution twenty twenty-four twelve, or are we gonna do them all?
No, that's, that's not a resolution, it's a file number.
Oh, it's a file number.
I have to give it a resolution, though, for, for the minutes, so, it's, it's both.
Good, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have two resolutions.
So, move to approve twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? It, I, you know, the only thing that concerned me was, um, it looked like wetlands, and I, it, is that a problem?
For plating, no.
No?
No, not for plating, uh, for building in, yeah, definitely, both, like plane and other stuff, but for plating, no, that's a.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, and then we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven, also on Prairie Center Township.
Move to approve that resolution, second.
There's a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we've got a welfare request.
Uh, county welfare, uh, the only contact I've had on this one was from the funeral home, um. Sounded like the family wasn't really involved with him, so, uh, don't have a lot of information on this.
So.
And we're not likely to get more information, so.
I move to approve.
Second.
So motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Drew, anything else?
So the minimal funds that were left, did we collect those?
Nah, no, uh, I got a bank, uh, statement from them. Somewhere that was like ten, fifteen bucks left in their checking account, their last, yeah, we didn't get that. Uh, that's all he had. No cars, no property. If we can, if we can get the money, we try, but they're just.
Cause I know we're supposed to.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody's coming forward, we have to take one.
It's not gonna go anywhere else, I mean, except for to the state and be unclaimed, so.
We, we had one where, um, not only did she pass, but not a lot of stuff, the stuff in her house just got stolen after she died. They broke in and cleaned it out.
The family she didn't have?
No, like friends of hers, yeah.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Good friends.
Yeah, uh, and the car too, that one, so, I just.
That happens every time. It was a car, now it's gone.
At least it's got a title. So there's, there's, there is a means of tracing the car.
Yeah, if it gets registered again in South Dakota though.
Yeah.
Cause then if it gets registered in another state, we can't find it that way again.
All right.
I'll, I'll leave that to Carrie for.
Thanks. So now we've got, um, the local emerg, no?
This, uh, budget supplement.
The budget supplement, it's a resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten to supplement the twenty twenty-four budget by a hundred and forty-one thousand. And that is.
So that is the equipment purchase money that we budgeted last year. So the city purchased the nine-one-one equipment last year. They billed us for it this year, so. In hindsight, I probably should have anticipated that, but I wasn't sure how that was gonna work. So now we just need to supplement the budget so that we can actually. Um, you know.
Pay the bill.
Move to supplement the budget, second, forty-one thousand.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to supplement the budget, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We have this separated.
Oh, we gotta do a vote, that's right.
Yeah, I probably should do a roll call on that, just because it's a budgetary item. Okay, so Mokler.
Yes.
Graylow.
Yes.
Smith. Daisy.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Good pets, Dave.
Excellent. So next item on the agenda, Lane, it's, uh. Lane's quarterly activity report. And we need a.
Same old, same old, for sure. And by. Yeah, yeah.
It's not necessary for me.
Yeah, yeah, so, got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I move to approve Lane's activity report.
So motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep.
Very thorough.
Yeah.
As usual.
Was it counting for the state?
What they're, yep.
Uh, and then I think Carrie added the surplus of items on there, so. Uh, kinda like what Andy says the other couple of names ago. In cleaning off a shelf, I found a radio that I forgot that I had. So we'll wipe it clean and get rid of it, and a twenty-year-old digital camcorder that has.
One point two meg, megapixels, maybe.
That, yeah, and then some, uh, handheld GPS units that. Your phone tracks you better now and all of that, so. Uh, it's just a matter of getting rid of some of the stuff before we have to move it to the new building.
I moved the radio, the two thousand four camcorder and the, uh, DeLorean GPS units you discovered.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, Lane. And we've got Rhonda. We've got a copier contract here that needs approval.
Yeah, I was just, my lease is up on my old printer, um, it gets used really heavy, so. It's probably a good idea to get a new one, plus this is really a much, much better contract, cause I have no overages, right now I'm paying about. Three to four hundred dollars every three months on overages alone, and, um, I have to say. I was a little hesitant when I first went with this company, cause I kinda felt pressured into it, but since I've had them. They're Johnny on the spot, if you have a problem, I send them an email, and I've got a person there to service it the same day. So anyway, with that being said, I'd like to approve, have you guys approve the contract?
Oh, I had a question on those, so, so there's a, there's a lease for the machine and there's a separate maintenance agreement, and I couldn't find a price tag on the maintenance agreement.
It's all included in my monthly payment.
Okay, so the two eighty gets you both of those, they're just two separate agreements, but, but it's all for two eighty, all right.
Yeah, that's why I thought this was really.
Excellent.
Excellent, yeah.
So the copier you have now, is that, do you own it or is that leased also?
It's leased.
Okay.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll change them out, set them up, Ericsson's are on the hook, they'll be there when they come and do it. Which will also help too, cause right now I've got, well, I'm down to two, but I had three freestanding, just little desktop ones, you know, that we primarily use for our tax printing. But they're expensive too, so this is kinda, I think, a win-win for me.
We, we had Lawfler at the credit union and we were always really happy with them, the only, the only thing was that they often had a lot more, the computer, calc, uh, copiers could do way more than what we. Ever had the time to train to figure out how to use, so, yeah.
Yeah. I want copy.
Yeah.
All right, so then what we need is a motion to authorize the chair to sign the contract for the Canon copier.
So moved.
Oh, there's a motion.
I'll take a second if you want, then, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Rhonda. Uh, now, I guess we go into ditch board now, yeah?
Move to go into ditch board.
Second.
Hey, it's a motion and a second to go into ditch board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have an invoice from Alltag.
Just their standard oversight work.
Yeah, for seventeen hundred and twenty-four dollars, it looks like, and sixty-six cents.
Move to approve.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion passes. Anything else for ditch board? You good, Rod? Entertained a motion to come out of ditch board?
Move to come out of ditch board.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, we're in regular session, ready?
All right, thanks. Um, Rod. That, uh, discussion of the tour of roads. Findings. What's really interesting.
Yeah, just wanted to. Go through, if you had any more comments or anything, um. Two of the spots there on University Road, we had, getting them one called right now, so. Um, the box culvert, we looked at, that two barrels were full, it was.
Yep.
Running pretty hard right now with water, so, I don't know, that'll be a while. Up there on, uh, like, uh, Beverly Knutson was, or Rodney Knutson was the one we talked to. So just wondered if you had any. More comments or, I guess the one thing I was gonna say is. The, those two pumps we looked at on University Road there. I don't know, was there anything there we could even do, or, I mean. The only, the one that, to the east there looked like it was. Actually putting the water out on the other guy, you know, I don't.
Certainly did.
Used to be, we had to be careful where we. Did culverts. How big we did the culverts. Well, there, that looked like it was really causing a problem. And clear down to that triangle to the east there, mile. I don't know if that's where all the water's coming from, but it looked like quite a bit of it.
So from that triangle and that, that south ditch that goes east to the river, is that county?
No, that's township, so, and I pointed out to Dick and Betty, but. That house there, east of that triangle, used to flood all the time. Well, there's a tile right on the outside in that ditch that goes clear down to the river, which takes quite. Take it all, but it keeps it from coming, I don't know who lives on the north side or. On the east side of that triangle, north side of the county road, but they came in, that was a, right after I started, we had trouble with that. And then I think we did a little clean out in there to get the water to run from. The curve over to the township gravel, through that pipe, I know we done that at, on the Greenfield Road at St. Peter's Church, so St. Peter's. Church did that, just to give it a little better run, but, yeah, so you guys looked at a culvert that. Collapsed there, yeah, and that, that township, yes.
Okay.
And basically, I would think all they did do is take a torch and cut it up. That's usually when they. That's usually when they implement runs over there or something, and just make like a safety end out of it and just taper it. So the water, did it look like it was blocking water?
So you were slowing it?
Well, you get on the.
Five percent of it was closed.
On the outlet side, the ditch was, there was nowhere for it to go.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, it doesn't do any good to fix the culvert if they're not gonna.
Right.
Ditch out.
Right. So. Yeah, it didn't end.
Which township is that, is that Prairie Center?
No, that should be. That's getting close to Vermillion, ain't it? Not Garderfield.
Prairie Center.
It is Prairie Center. What is, what is the south border of Prairie Center?
Uh, three fifteenth, just two miles south.
Oh, God, I didn't know it come down that far. Yeah, I didn't know if you guys had any thought about anymore or anything, so I thought I'd bring it up. We're working on them two spots up there on University Road and, cause now, uh, the culvert that. Bent over at the Tabernacle Bridge, I'm sure is underwater now.
Oh, yeah.
River is way up, so. That's about all I had on that, I guess.
Yeah, those two pump discharges, you know, the, the main concern for us and the main reason to have it. End on their property is so that the discharge doesn't erode a hole in our ditch, cause a hazard there. And it didn't look like that was happening there.
Yeah, the first one looks like they have. I call them hog slats, like the concrete pad. And the other one just had a couple rocks by it, I guess, I don't know. I never looked it up to see, is that the same? Landowner was, okay.
Yeah, it's Nick Marigans.
Yeah.
Wh- when did those go in?
You know, we can run them, we can run them.
Four or five years ago?
Okay.
They just haven't run.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Yeah.
And then.
Dry drainage.
Yeah, that's right.
We have one up, uh, three hundred and First Street on the west side of University. And that's the only one I know of that came in and actually got permission to do it. And he even pays to oversize the culvert under the, uh, approach. For that one, cause it has straight shot to a creek, so. The other two, or, yeah, those two I had, didn't know about, and then we got one out in a field. Farther on the Greenfield Road, so. But.
Any other thoughts?
Thank you for the tour, it was, yep.
Yeah, anytime, anytime you guys wanna go out and look at something, just give me a call, we'll. It's hard to explain, it's easier to look.
Yeah.
Makes it a lot easier to figure out what's going on, even if you look at it on pictometry or.
Mm-hmm.
Even it's still.
Not the same.
On it is the best way to go.
Yep.
I know there's a lot of times she'll give us a half a dozen pictures or more, but you're right, you know, being on site's a lot better.
Then we got a driveway application from East River Electric.
Yeah, so we have a little substation on. Three hundred thirteenth street or. Gravel Road M one, just north of Meckling, um, and they're gonna. I guess they're adding on to it, more to the facility, a new fence around it, and they wanna widen out. The driveway, the culvert that's there is fine, they just wanna add to it. And, um, on the original, he sent me, it was. They just put it down as a fifteen-inch pipe, but it's a eighteen-inch pipe, so I crossed that out. But yeah, I recommend it for approvals.
Yeah, so I didn't, it didn't get corrected on the construction drawings, but yeah, I saw you'd fix that on the.
Yeah, I've used that driveway, yeah, it'd be good to wagon it.
Yeah, they're coming in there with some bigger equipment, I guess, so.
Yep.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we are on to, um, the pavement marking contract with the OT.
Okay, so not to get confused, we did a pavement marking contract here a couple of weeks ago, and that's. Just. A bunch of counties went together this year and doing it, this is a long-term one, so in case this. Sixteen county group, eighteen or whatever it was, doesn't work out. We signed this, this is for fifteen years, so we don't lose out on very little money, but. We don't lose out on a chance to get it again, so, and. To me, that's a good thing, so.
Yep.
I recommend you. Approve that also or sign that again, whatever.
So moved.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to approve the joint powers agreement with DOT, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we had a letter of support from Southeast Farmers Co-op for the county's agribusiness grant application.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I guess. I had a couple of questions whether. Now we're gonna have to go through the process again next year instead of. Getting that grant this year because we're not gonna do anything till twenty-five, I don't know, it's kinda seemed to be like. It's so, oh, she's not, if Sophie was. Like now in this letter, they say, well, they're not gonna start anything due to the county road conditions. Which I don't see any problem when I can't start building in there. But now it don't look like they're planning on doing anything till twenty-five, so I don't know how that. How that grant works.
No, they.
Michael's shaking his head.
But why can't we get the grants for April construction?
I don't, I have, that's what I'm asking, I. I just saw this, um. Apparently Sophie asked for. A letter from you guys, but I thought we already did that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, to support the agribusiness, yeah.
Then I have this letter from Southeast, which is April third. And so I was kinda confused on whether something had happened that I wasn't aware of.
She already submitted the grant application, Sophie did.
I, I thought.
I think that probably went with it, because I think it was closer to April fifteenth when she submitted the application.
Cause April fifteenth, it had to be in.
Yeah.
Yep. That was the.
And.
Okay, well, that's my misunderstanding then, cause this, for some reason, I just got this. Email to me last week, this letter, and. This time when I read it, it seemed like different than, uh.
Well. I thought we were, when we had, we're all here and we were talking to them, that, that they, they said that they've begun work because they've begun clearing things out and moving dirt around and things, I think, I thought that was. Is how they addressed the question of, are you gonna start work on this within six months, they said, yeah, we're already, we're already doing it, so.
They're not doing it.
No, or.
Mark or it is.
Mark or it's doing it. Current owner, the, the former owner.
The former owner.
Was taking stuff down that he still wanted, so as far as Southeast, they haven't done anything.
They haven't done anything though, okay.
No, and it would be later summer because they're building in El Point right now.
But they did say that they would, yeah.
They would like to start this year, which I'm sure moving dirt this fall is something they would do.
And that's, that's why I keep stressing that, I'm not trying to keep them from working there.
Alright.
You know, it's just, we need to have something in place before, and, you know, maybe the first hundred trucks. You know, whatever they're gonna haul in, that, it probably isn't gonna bother the road much. But, yeah, I just seems to me like they always keep putting it back on us, we're holding them, keep holding them back due to the condition of the county roads, we can't.
No. No, cause we discussed.
Not adequate to support, so the way I take it, they're. You know.
He might be thinking that, but that day we talked about, we'll just have to coordinate when they're working and us pouring a road.
Mm-hmm.
So it wasn't, wasn't.
That's usually what they do at all these places, that's what I mean, but.
It's not on us.
No, they even say we're excellent.
And I haven't had a chance to get ahold of Sophie this morning yet, so. Maybe I'll get ahold of her and see, maybe I give you an update, or she'll probably give us an update too, so.
Cause when do they normally? Do they, is there no deadline on this grant money?
Yeah.
Is there a?
April fifteenth is the first time, and I believe you can do it two more times in the year. Of course, the later you do it, the longer it takes, but then there's, uh. It usually takes a long time and period to trickle down, but in. When we were in Deadwood, Brad Stanger and I met with. Paula Hunziger, who is like the gal that actually dishes out the money, and she said. It shouldn't take till November, you didn't tell me, it took them almost a year to find out. So Brad and I talked to Paula and she said Suzie got to her desk, or Suzie sent it in, Brad was gonna get ahold of her. So they knew it was sitting there, we should know something by, in June.
So if we know in June, they have to understand that we can't get it done this year, right?
Correct, that's, and that's why I was asking, is this, now we have to go over, and I guess I kinda forgot that last time we had a meeting. Sophie was gonna get that turned in, but she's still waiting for that. A letter, a committal from.
Southeast.
Southeastern, and that came right after the meeting, so.
Yep, so. Maybe you should call Paula then, cause obviously Sophie must have turned the application in, I would ask Paula then if.
If you've seen anything.
Well, if we can use that money, April, April of next year, whatever, when we start.
Yeah, well, you know, usually that grant is. You always apply for it and then you use it, not, well, I suppose it could work in the same year, but. But, uh.
But like you said.
This is the first one of these, well, we applied for one of these and got like a hundred and forty. No, we got more than that, what was it, two? Over two hundred, I think it was like two hundred fifty thousand to do the concrete road the first time to the ethanol plant. But it fell through, we were approved for that too, so. But we're gonna do the, we already had, uh, plans done, this, we're kinda farther ahead on that. Deal which fell through, this one don't look like it's gonna fall through, so now it feels like we're behind for some reason, but.
We're still fine, as long as we don't lose the grant.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'll give her a call when I get back to the office. We can, if there's something not good, I'll put it on the agenda, maybe by next week we'll know something too, it's hard to tell.
Great.
That's all I got, anything else for us?
Alright, well, thank you.
Give you these. I got the original ones.
Oh, just sign.
We're on lockout without them again. I think Carrie has to. Attack us with the contract.
Looks like it. Then the next. Next item on the agenda is, um, vouchers and payroll, oh, one more signature.
The move to approve vouchers, second.
It's a motion and a second to approve the vouchers, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any Clay County Park business?
Um, not much, uh, one, one, there was a little change on the, um. So we, we put the farm ground up for bids again, um, the, uh, the new tenant recognized that there was, uh. Five acres that when we had, uh, when we put out the bid, there's five acres that is a. Parking lot and a, um, trail around the field, it's not farmable, and we had, uh, listed that in the total number of farmable acres. And so upon discussion at the park board level, uh, we agreed to refund that, uh, about fifteen hundred dollars for that to him with the next rent payment, so. That's the only, only change, that's, uh, that's last.
Building project?
Keeps raining, but they're moving forward slowly.
Said we put the walls up this morning.
What's that?
They're putting walls up this morning.
Yeah, well, it's finally not, you know, thirty mile an hour winds. It's really been a problem. Um, joint jurisdiction discussion, any, anything?
Hmm, we did meet and, uh, oh, we made a few changes, minor changes, uh. As far as protected land use on, in joint jurisdiction. Which, uh. Talked about next meeting, and we're getting kinda close to bringing something to both this board and to the city, city council, so we have. Chances to, first, first each planning commission, then, then here, we'll want those to come to you before we have a, uh. A, uh, gonna plan also, uh. A couple of public meetings, uh, to present. Comprehensive joint jurisdiction plan and, uh. Let, let the public have a look at, at that, both, and everyone that's interested, we're gonna make a special. A special effort to make sure that everyone that owns property in joint jurisdiction has a, has a, an extra notice of that. Uh, we'll also put it on, on all the normal broadcast, broadcasting style. Publication of. Venues, and then, uh, move on to adopt it with some luck of. Not too much controversy if we, if we talk about it enough beforehand.
Sounds good, progress.
Yep.
Progress. Any, um, executive session necessary?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal?
So moved, second.
It's a motion and a second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright.
Alright.
We're good? Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
There's a motion to come out of executive session, second, um.
We already have a Jeffrey. The second.
Yeah.
Um, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.